All right, it looks like we are now streaming on YouTube and we are recording. So I am going to call to order the public hearing in KCC docket number 25 EKCE 207PRE. My name is Andrew French. I'm Chair of the Kansas Corporation Commission. Joining me tonight are my colleagues Commissioners Dwight Keane and Annie Keather. To make participation in this hearing as convenient as possible for Evergy customers across the state, we've decided to hold this hearing virtually by Zoom with live streaming to YouTube now. Please do bear with us if you or we experience any technical difficulties. Hopefully, we can get this to run smoothly tonight. This docket was initiated by Evergy Kansas Central to request a predetermination of rate-making principles associated with the building of two new combined-cycle natural gas plants and the acquisition of one solar generation facility. And that would include a KCC decision on whether Evergy would be entitled to recover the costs of those investments from its customers. This evening, you will hear brief presentations explaining the issues in this case from Representatives of Evergy, the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, or Curb, and the Kansas Corporation Commission staff. Following those presentations, you will have an opportunity to make your comments on the record. We're going to begin those presentations first with Evergy and Mr. Darren Ives and Jason Humphrey, who will be representing for the company. Why don't you all go ahead if you've got the presentation? I'm not sure if Evergy's going to share it or if our IT staff will share it, but I'll let you all take it away.
Thanks Chair French. Can everybody hear me okay?
We do, yes.
Right, and I think the IT group was going to share the presentation. Do I have that right?
Michelle or Jayden, do you have Evergy's presentation to share?
I have it up. It's a little different because it's a PDF. Let me just set here.
Okay, I see it. Are you ready, Michelle?
Yes.
And if you're able to go full screen with that, Michelle, that would be great.
Okay, perfect. So, so good evening, and we want to thank everyone for taking time out of your evening to join us for our virtual public hearing to discuss our request for predetermination approval.
Mr. Ives, we've lost your audio all of a sudden. Nope, we've lost you.
Did your audio device change? So we have, you know, yeah, we can't hear you. Even though you are unmuted.
Mr. Ives, you may have to try a different microphone device, or we may go to the other Evergy representative to see if he can run the presentation.
How about now?
We got you now. Hopefully for the long haul.
All right, let's, uh, let's see if this will work. Changed audio. All right, well, let me start over. You know, good evening. We want to thank everyone for taking time out of your evening to join us tonight for this virtual public hearing to discuss our request for predetermination approval to construct, own, and operate two large natural gas facilities and our first utility-scale solar generating facility in Kansas. My name is Darren Ives, and I am the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs for Evergy. And as mentioned, I'm joined tonight by Jason Humphrey. Jason is Evergy's Vice President of Development. I'm going to discuss for a couple of minutes the purpose of this filing and the importance of the resources that we are proposing to add to serve our Kansas customers. And then Jason's going to spend some time describing in more detail the attributes and benefits of the specific resources that we're proposing to construct. As we, as we look at Slide 2, Evergy's construction of the new generation facilities proposed in this proceeding is a significant part of Evergy's broader, long-term resource plan to meet substantially increased capacity and energy requirements while ensuring system reliability and minimizing carbon emissions from our system. Evergy is committed to a multifaceted plan for responsible generation transition involving new, highly efficient natural gas generation, which helps modernize our dispatchable generation fleet, leading to less reliance on older units and coal for generation, growing investment in solar and wind generation resources, and a continued focus on demand-side management programs. Our plan results in a balanced, all-of-the-above strategy in maintaining resource adequacy that will benefit Kansas customers for years to come. Evergy's preferred resource plan, and more specifically, the projects proposed in this proceeding, advanced the fiscal and economic objectives of ensuring that investments in new generating facilities are prudent, that they are part of a robust and resilient resource plan that considers the least-cost options to meet long-term planning requirements, and that they meet our obligation to provide dependable, efficient, and affordable service to Evergy's customers, and that they facilitate the continuation of Kansas's successful economic development achievements. Evergy's investment in the two natural gas plants in Reno and Sumner Counties will bring direct value to the areas in jobs and tax dollars, and will ensure Kansas can continue to accommodate business growth that will benefit the entire state. As we move to Slide 3, Slide 3 touches on the benefits of a predetermination filing for generation investments such as the ones in our request. First, because the Commission, staff, Curb, interveners, and other interested parties, including the public, are able to view specific aspects of the projects, including the cost, and be involved in the shaping of rate-making policy related to the project before, during, and after construction, predetermination enhances collaboration and transparency. At the same time, there's more visibility and control on the prudence of the costs themselves throughout the process. This is not just to benefit to customers, but it also engenders greater confidence in the process and therefore is a substantial benefit to Evergy. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, these projects are an important part of Evergy's resource plan to meet increased capacity and energy requirements and support substantial economic development in Kansas. Predetermination and the decisions from the Commission in this proceeding will allow Evergy to accomplish these goals nimbly, efficiently, and at a lower cost to the customer because of rate-making options that are available in Kansas. Moving to Slide 4, it highlights the size of and specific generation facilities that we are requesting to construct, own, and operate in serving our Kansas customers. I won't touch more on the specific investments here as I'm about to turn the microphone over to Jason so that he can describe the assets and their benefits more fully. I would be remiss if I didn't discuss briefly, though, our expectation of rates. For Evergy, the three pillars supporting our strategy are affordability, reliability, and sustainability in advancing the prosperity of our communities and customers. I've touched on the reliability benefits of the new generation facilities and how they are a part of our long-term resource plan toward a responsible generation transition to place less reliance on older generation facilities and coal. Our resource plan development evaluated many options, and this preferred plan exited that evaluation as the least-cost option to meet our long-term planning needs. As you'll note on the slide, when looked at as changes from today's rates, rate impacts expected from these additions started an estimated 0.58% annual increase, up to just under 4% of an annual increase near the end of construction, and culminating in a little over a 4% increase per natural gas plant when entering service to customers and fully reflected in customers' rates. We recognize that these do represent increases to customers and will be impactful. That said, at these levels, the growth in rates from today until these plants are completed in 2029 and 2030 results in less than the aggregate impact of inflation expected over that same period. The estimated rate impacts we provide also don't reflect benefits from additional electricity cells beyond today's levels, which will serve to lower the estimated impact on existing customers' rates. Additionally, as noted, customers will benefit from the reliability and environmental benefits of these new generation resources for the next 30-plus years. With that, I'm going to let Jason walk you through the details of our requested additions and the benefits we expect from adding them to our fleet. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you, Darren. Once again, my name is Jason Humphrey. I am lucky to serve as Evergy's Vice President of Development, focused on adding new resources to Evergy's generation fleet. Tonight, we are here to discuss three new power plants for which Evergy Kansas Central has filed for predetermination of rate-making principles. As we transition to Slide 5, we can see the preferred plan identified during the 2024 triennial Integrated Resource Plan process that Evergy filed with the Commission in 2024. This preferred plan represents Evergy's view of the least-cost method of service for the capacity and energy requirements of our customers. The Integrated Resource Plan is a 20-year view on how best to serve the energy needs of our customers over time across an inherently uncertain future. Our goal in this process is to select a preferred plan that is robust against those uncertain futures and allows Evergy to pick a path forward to implement resources in the near term. As you can see on the right of Slide 5, the plan really is an all-of-the-above plan, as Darren mentioned in his remarks. The plan started with Kansas Central's acquisition of a wind farm that began serving Evergy's fleet in late 2023, and over the next decade contemplated Evergy adding 1,300 megawatts of new natural gas generation and 1,550 megawatts of renewables, mostly solar generation. Moving to Slide 6, we can hone in on the three assets that are the subject of our predetermination filing before the Kansas Corporation Commission. The first asset chronologically in the plan, marked with a large blue 1, is an 159-megawatt solar facility that will address the 2027 need for 150 megawatts of solar identified in the 2024 preferred plan. Solar is a resource, due to the maturity of the projects and their development cycle, that we can deploy relatively quickly. Solar is also a resource that provides great on-peak capacity and energy and is a good complement to our existing portfolio, which has a lot of conventional generation and a lot of wind, but has no utility-scale solar today. What I mean by the on-peak nature of solar is that if we all think about that blazing-hot afternoon in August where you're just hoping your air conditioner keeps up, those tend to be the days that solar is performing at its maximum. It also tends to be the time that Evergy's system utilization is highest. Solar is a really nice complement to wind in that respect, which tends to generate overnight. Assets number 2 and 3 on the slide are two halves of a natural gas combined-cycle gas turbine power plant, expected to be operational in 2029 and 2030 respectively. I will explain more on the combined-cycle technology utilized by these plants later in my presentation. These two power plants will address the 325-megawatt gas plant needs identified in the 2024 IRP in 2029 and 2030. Viola Plant is located in Sumner County, Kansas, south of Wichita, next to a relatively new existing Evergy high-voltage substation, which is also named Viola. The McNew Plant will be a sister unit to the Viola site. It is also a combined-cycle gas turbine power plant and will be located in Reno County near Hutcheson, very close to natural gas infrastructure in a community that has had Evergy power plants for decades. Moving now to Slide 7, we can see the sites on a map. I won't spend a ton of time on this slide, but the map does give a good perspective on where the units are located in our service territory. The assets are spread throughout our service territory on Evergy lines in the southwest power pool and will produce energy and capacity benefits for customers and the economies of Kansas and Missouri. Next slide, please. Slide 8 is a pictorial overview of a combined-cycle power plant and how that works. At its core, a combined-cycle unit is a way to generate more electricity with less fuel by creatively using the exhaust heat from a combustion turbine and using that exhaust heat to create steam to power a steam turbine. Starting on the left side of the slide, a combustion turbine takes an air from the outside, compresses it down, adds fuel, and then expands that fuel-and-air mixture through a turbine to produce rotation, which spins an electrical generator. That is how simple-cycle or peaker plants work, similar to Kansas Central's plant in Emporia. However, the combined-cycle then takes that exhaust heat and passes it through a heat-recovery steam generator that is designed to make steam with that heat. The steam can then be used to power a second turbine, which can also be used to generate electricity. This allows for the creation of some of the most advanced and thermally-efficient power plants that we can build. By utilizing the two types of power-generation technologies together, we can create a plant that generates nearly 50% more electricity per unit of fuel than we can with an efficient, simple-cycle peaking plant on its own. Moving now to Slide 9. On the right side of the slide is a rendering of the proposed Sumner County Combined Cycle Power Plant. The plan is proposed to come online in 2029. As you can see, the plant is right across the street from the high-voltage substation I mentioned earlier. The plant is a one-on-one combined-cycle plant, which means we propose to having one gas turbine powering one steam turbine at the site. The site's summer output is 710 megawatts, with higher outputs at different seasons of the year. The plant will operate on natural gas fuel, which will be procured on a firm transport contract from the pipeline to ensure that the plant has adequate fuel supply when needed. Starting on the left side of the picture, you can see the back end of the heat-recovery steam generator and the plant stack that will release the exhaust after it has gone through the combustion turbine, HRSG, and emissions controls for the plant. Next to the exhaust stack is the turbine building. This is an important feature of these plants, as it allows much of the critical equipment to be indoors and out of the elements. We have all lived through many significant cold-weather events over the last few years, with 2021's winter storm Yuri being the most memorable of all. With that in mind, we designed these plants to have winterization at top of mind and to be enclosed where we could. The tops of the heat-recovery steam generators will be enclosed in a penthouse, and both the combustion and steam turbines will be indoors in the turbine building. Finally, on the far-right side of the plant, you can see the tall structure that has 16 hyperbolic shrouds on top. It looks like a very large set of FinFAN heat exchangers, because it is. This is an air-cooled condenser for the plant that will take the steam that has passed through the steam turbine and condense it back to liquid water. Traditionally, at a power plant, this is done through a secondary cooling loop that either went once through, directly back to a river or lake, or went to a cooling tower where heat was rejected in the form of evaporation. Either of these methods require vast amounts of raw water to be available to the plant. However, in order to make these plants more sustainable and far, far less water-intensive over time, we have designed them to use these large FinFAN heat exchangers to instead condense the steam back to water without any additional raw water need. In fact, this method reduces the water needed by the plant over 90% when compared with traditional technologies. In addition to being extremely efficient from a water usage standpoint, the plants are also world-class from a thermal efficiency standpoint. This is how we measure how good a power plant is at taking fuel and turning it into electricity. These units are approximately 64% efficient, which puts them in world-record class for power plants. What this means practically is less fuel consumption for the same amount of electricity, and it also means that the plants have the least amount of emissions possible per unit of electricity. The high efficiency of the unit also means that these are designed to be good investments for our customers for the next 30-plus years, just as our existing fleet has been today. In addition to their great efficiency, the units have been designed to be extremely flexible and able to respond to the changing needs of the grid. The power plant is able to turn down its output all the way to 22% of plant maximum, still in full emissions compliance, allowing for a 550-megawatt operating range for these plants. This will allow our grid operators to have Viola and McNew directly back up the intermittent resources on the grid. These units have been planned for the needs of our customers today and tomorrow. Moving now to Slide 10, and the Reno County Combined Cycle. Much of what I said on the previous slide is true here as well. The plant is designed as a one-on-one combined-cycle with an air-cooled condenser and much of the unit indoors. The same operating flexibility is present here, and the unit is proposed to come online in 2030. The Reno and Sumner County units are in fact proposed as twin units. Rather than having bespoke power plants throughout the state, Evergy is trying to standardize on the design of our new simple-cycle and combined-cycle plants as we invest in our energy and capacity resources. The reason for this key decision is economies of scale. By leveraging a common approach, Evergy's customers are able to benefit from efficiency of engineering, efficiency of construction, operation, and maintenance, all over time. Critical spare parts will become common across the new units. Maintenance and operations employees will be familiar with the sites and able to share best practices. And designing one plant with some tweaks is certainly more efficient and effective than designing two plants from whole cloth. On Slide 11, we will pivot to talking about our proposed solar resource. A photovoltaic solar plant takes energy from the sun and converts that energy to electricity. Unlike a wind turbine or a traditional power plant, there is no spinning generator at a solar site. Instead, energy from light displaces electrons in a semiconductor within a solar panel to create a flow of electrons and a direct current. That direct current energy then runs through an inverter to produce alternating current. This electricity is served to homes and businesses from the power grid. Solar power plants use no fuel in the traditional sense, but are instead powered purely by sunlight, which, as I mentioned earlier, often drives our peak demand days. Slide 12, that we will move to now, is my last heavy content slide before we wrap up. The Kansas Sky Solar Plant in Douglas County, Kansas, is proposed to go in service in 2027 and will have an 159-megawatt alternating current output. The plant is located in an energy community across the river from Evergy's Lawrence Energy Center. Douglas County has been an important energy production area for Evergy's customers for many years, and the usage of the site as an energy community allows First Kansas Sky to benefit from additional bonus tax credits under the Inflation Reduction Act, which will directly go to lowering the cost of energy from this site for Kansas Central customers. The bonus credit takes the site from an 100% production tax credit, or 30% investment tax credit site, to an 110% PTC or 40% ITC location. And like I said earlier, those benefits go directly to lowering the cost of energy from the site to the benefit of our customers. The energy produced at Kansas Sky will enter the grid in an adjacent substation to the site called Midla Junction and will be immediately available to Evergy's wires and Evergy's customers. Lastly, and flipping to Slide 13, the three projects before the KCC in our predetermination application are important steps in ensuring reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy are available to our customers for years to come as we work to live our mission of empowering a better future. Darren and I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to present in the public hearing tonight, and that concludes Evergy's prepared remarks. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Humphrey and Mr. Ives. We will now turn to Mr. Joseph Aestreb with the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board to hear its perspective.
Oh, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
We hear you coming through loud and clear.
Great, thank you. I will share my screen with my presentation. One moment. Does everyone see my screen okay?
We can see it. You may want to try to go full screen.
There it goes. We see that, okay? Great, thank you. Okay. Good evening. My name is Joseph Aestreb. I'm the Consumer Counsel for the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, otherwise known as Curb. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone in attendance today for the public hearing. As a public servant, I appreciate the efforts that people in the community take to be informed and involved with a topic like utility regulation. Energy is such a ubiquitous subject that impacts all areas of daily life, from working to the household, right down to the food we eat. But this complex subject matter is not easily understood with just a cursory glance at your power bill. And to that end, I want to extend my gratitude to the Kansas Corporation Commission, the Commissioners, and its staff for providing this forum to speak with the public and to hear your thoughts and comments. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Curb to those who may not know about our organization and what we do. And then secondly, I will talk about Curb's role in this docket and concerns about the application and how we're evaluating their request. Curb, as a government agency, is tasked with representing the interests of residential and small commercial ratepayers for the Kansas Corporation Commission and other venues in the topic of utility regulation. First formed in 1989, we were actually a branch of the Kansas Corporation Commission, along with their other divisions such as the Utilities Division, which deals with utilities in transportation and conservation. But afterwards, because of the importance of the representation of those interests and those types of constituents, Curb was made an independent agency under the executive branch, still working alongside with the Kansas Corporation Commission and other stakeholders. As the name implies, we have a board of five members from the state of Kansas. These members are appointed by the governor, and they serve four-year staggered terms. They are volunteers from the community, and they are not paid for their services. However, they are expected to attend quarterly meetings and beyond with Curb staff and to also be available for consultation regarding important dockets and policy direction. And so these volunteers can sometimes put in over 100 hours during a year in service of Curb, and so we greatly appreciate their services. A little more details on our board composition. They are appointed from each congressional district, and you can see the map there on the screen and the arrows pointing to each of those congressional districts. And we have a fifth member who is appointed from the state at large. All of these individuals have been serving with the board for a few years now, and they all have experience in different areas, both directly indirectly affecting utility regulation. All these board members are highly dedicated to being available and serving Curb here and providing guidance on our work. They are also very concerned with high utility rates in particular and the effects of these rates on low-income ratepayers. Additionally, all these board members understand the importance of being a good steward of the earth while also making sure that ratepayers have reliable and sufficient service. Curb itself is staffed with a number of attorneys, technical staff, and administrative professionals. There's the Consumer Council, which is me. We have one attorney in-house, and we have three rate analysts that provide research and discussion and help with conducting our work for the KCC and two administrative professionals to help with the day-to-day operations. And we're located right here in Topeka, Kansas, inside of the Kansas Corporation Commission building, so we're always available to the public through meetings and phone calls. As I mentioned earlier, our mission is to represent residential and small commercial utility ratepayer interest. And so... And so that happens in a number of forms. The first and foremost is before the Kansas Corporation Commission dealing with utility rates, tariffs, and various utility programs and practices. We are tasked with intervening in those dockets and providing expert analysis and professional representation to advocate for ratepayers. Furthermore, we also have a presence at the Kansas Legislature. Uh, during the session, we are involved with reviewing potential bills and research questions for legislators to provide them with assistance and perspectives of the needs of residential and small commercial ratepayers. And also, we have a presence with Kansas Courts. Uh, because this is a regulatory uh type proceeding, they are subject to any sort of appellate review from district courts and appellate courts. So whenever a case gets resolved and the KCC is appealed up, Curb is also available to intervene and represent at that level as well. And outside of that, Curb is available to its constituents and ratepayers. Although we are not tasked with individual representation in court or before the Kansas Corporation Commission, we are available to field questions and provide research and answers for those who call in and make sure that we're able to kind of help shepherd customers in getting answers for their questions. This slide here helps put right a breakdown of the time spent on Curb duties, and it's color-coded there. The large portion, as you see, is dedicated to KCC dockets, which is the primary uh objective of our work, is being able to intervene in those dockets and provide representation for those interests when individual ratepayers may not be able to access that type of regulatory setting. Beyond that, we are also involved with policy work. It's important that Curb staff is up to date and aware of the most recent and developing issues and technologies affecting utility regulations so that we become effective advocates in our roles. We also spend significant time on legislative work, as I mentioned before, analyzing potential bills, providing testimony, both written and oral, and addressing questions from our legislators and your representatives. Beyond that, we also spend time with formal complaints, which is dealing with individuals who may have questions about their utility bills. Uh, grievances against the utilities, we help provide information and guidance to resolve those types of issues. And then from there, we take effort to making sure we are providing information to the public through outreach efforts such as newsletters and maintenance of websites and other events in the community. And then we've also spent some time on court cases that do happen to get appealed up. That's not a very common type of our, part of our job, but they do pop up every now and again. For those unfamiliar with the regulatory process of the KCC, it's all governed by Kansas law. The, the overarching premise for utility regulation is found in the KSA sixty-six dash one oh one B, which requires utilities to provide reasonable, adequate, and sufficient service and just in reasonable rates. As part of any sort of rate case or docket or tariff of any sort, the Kansas Corporation Commission must base their decisions upon evidence. And because of the openness and the availability of people to intervene and become involved and groups to become involved with these types of cases, uh, Curb believes that these diverse views are necessary for effective regulation. So in order to give the Kansas Corporation Commission the widest amount of evidence to work from, different views are required, you think. And the corporation, uh, Kansas Corporation Commission is tasked with weighing this evidence and balancing the interests of the parties and determining fair and reasonable results. The case here today is being filed under what's referred to as the predetermination statute, KSA sixty-six dash one-two-three-nine. This sets up a procedure for the utilities to file applications with the Kansas Corporation Commission to receive determination of rate-making treatment and principles that will be applied to investments for certain types of facilities. It requires a, a finding that such uh facilities that are being acquired are reasonable, reliable, and efficient, and it gives the commission a two-hundred-and-forty-day timeframe to issue an order. As mentioned by Evergy, this type of determination has to be within the context of Evergy's Integrated Resource Plan. This is a filing made by the company that previews and sets out and provides some transparency into their resource acquisition plan for the future. It provides details about how much energy they may need, what sources they're needing it for, and the drivers behind those decisions. Additionally, recently in the two thousand and twenty-four legislative session, House Bill twenty-five-twenty-seven amended this statute to include additional provisions for the recovery of construction work in progress uh costs and um other expenses that are incurred prior to the inclusion of those costs and rates through a general rate case. Turning to Ever, Evergy's application, they are proposing construction of three new generation resources, and it's required uh prudency determination of two combined-cycle natural gas plants and a solar generation facility. Uh, the commission will be tasked not only determining the reasonableness of these projects, but also determination of cost estimates and recovery through the C-WIP rider for the gas plants and a levelized revenue requirement for the solar facility. The overarching purpose of this, again, is to address significant low-growth factors in the face of an uncertain energy future, uh, because we can't tell what kind of resources will come online or be available in the future, or what kind of customers will be joining uh Kansas in the near future. It's important that the company remain flexible and capable of addressing those needs. And so the general process, when the company files an application, parties are allowed to intervene in groups, whether in individual capacity or collectively as a group. So Curb itself is intervening along with environmental groups who are, who are concerned about the environmental impacts of such facilities, both large commercial and smaller commercial entities who are concerned about the cost and rates that they will pay, and other groups such as larger industrial customers who may be coming to Kansas to use this new energy. And so all these different parties come together, provide their diverse views, their evidence and their analyses for the commission to consider when making a determination of whether or not to uh approve and to set the rate-making treatment for these types of facilities. Curb is currently reviewing the application and is looking at the, the analyses and the reasons for Evergy's decision to implement or to build these plants at this time and to receive prior determination of the rate-making treatment. So as I mentioned before, uh, the primary work that Curb does is through rate cases, wherein the utility provides a full accounting of all the expenditures that it incurs, such as operational and new plant uh construction costs, and shows the utility, shows the commission that it's reasonable and that these, these costs were needed to provide sufficient and reliable service. Now, the key difference with the rate cases, that is evaluated after those costs are spent. Whereas with predetermination, the money has not yet been spent, but there's been a determination that they will be covered, covered through rates. Uh, furthermore, there is a review of economic development and the Integrated Resource Plan. Um, it's been a big policy goal of Kansas to be able to attract new investment in business and in the community in order to garner, generate more jobs, more revenue for the state, and more economic activity. We, it's been determined that's a pretty important uh policy goal for the state. I've recreated the table here regarding the Integrated Resource Plan approved with their preferred plan by Evergy. And you'll notice in the twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-nine and twenty-thirty are the timeframes implicated in this predetermination docket when they expect these plants to go online. So that represents how they're going to meet that need. They provided the specific details and the resources that'll be able to supply the energy they are expecting to need in the near future, again, being driven by large customer growth from larger customers. We're also looking at the impacts of cost recovery regarding the C-WIP rider and the costs themselves in building these plants and what kind of impacts they may have on the bills. And then, of course, we're evaluating how public policy goals are being met through this type of activity and through this application, whether or not it's being done in a reasonable way that provides the lowest possible cost for ratepayers while providing benefits to the system as a whole. So generally, in most rate cases, and particularly in a case like this, we're concerned with a number of areas. The first and foremost, we believe, is reliability. Uh, in the event that a utility cannot provide energy for its customers, it may have, it be, it may be required to implement controlled shut-offs to provide wider outages. And in order to be able to keep up with the demands of customers, it has to build new generation facilities and find new ways to acquire energy. Uh, I think we could all agree that is not in the public interest if ratepayers cannot depend upon their electric system to provide energy when they flip a switch or turn on an appliance. And so as more customers come onto the grid and demand more energy, the utility must respond in kind to be able to provide that energy. Second, the reported reliability, and sometimes even first before that, is affordability. Um, as people may recall during Winter Storm Uri in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, there was concern about reliability and what that has, and that definitely has a cost both in property damage and human lives. But once the dust cleared and reliability is no longer a concern, people's attention do turn towards what happens on their bill. And so Curb is very concerned with affordability and any sort of riders or increases to bills and what kind of impact they may have on their most vulnerable of customers. As bills go up due to reasons not necessarily tied to a customer's individual usage, the burden that each household uh takes on as far as their income being dedicated to energy bills goes up. This increases the risk for disconnections and missed payments, and so we're always aware, are cognizant of those kind of impacts. Third, we're also worried about sufficient versus excess capacity. As I mentioned earlier, the utility is aiming to build and to make sure that has sufficient capacity to serve the load of customers at all times. However, if certain load doesn't materialize and there's not the projected load that they expected, all this additional energy becomes excess capacity that's not necessarily being used to serve customers' needs. Now, either those plants can sit and languish and not be used, or that energy can be sold into a greater energy exchange market regulated by a regional transmission organization. Now, while that latter part may have some benefits by providing additional revenue that can be used to lower bill impacts, the question becomes what is the cost of those additional capacity that's not being used to serve energy usage? And so we want to make sure that there's a fair balance that we're actually meeting that load and that we're making accurate projections and how much more capacity we will need in the future. Um, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the drivers here behind this increase is due to economic activity, uh, especially with data centers. Data centers themselves are a new uh type of industry that's coming around the country and people, and those types of companies are looking for uh places where they can operate at the lowest possible cost. And that butts up against Kansas's desire to attract that type of activity. And so in order to make sure that these businesses are comfortable coming to Kansas, they have to be confident that they'll be able to use energy without interruptions. And so in the event that technology changes and develops and energy usage goes down, the question becomes whether or not there is too much capacity in the system as a result of this, this, this docket. And that ties into accurate forecasting and cost estimates. Curb has retained experts and is reviewing the application to ensure that they're making, that the company is making reasonable estimates and projections of future load to ensure that what they're doing and their resource acquisition strategy is sound and reasonable. And then finally, we're looking at impacts on residential and small commercial ratepayers. Any sort of bill impact is going to impact people differently. Some people may be able to absorb those impacts easier than others and what kind of uh effects that may have on low-income individuals. And so we are monitoring not only the cost estimates themselves, but also the bill impacts and what increases we will see on bills in the future and making sure that those fall in line with projections that have been approved in this docket. This slide here provides information for the public to be able to access the Kansas Corporation Commission to provide written comments uh up until April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the application itself and testimony associated with this application can be found on the KCC's website. And there are various ways that the public can interact with the KCC either through uh online forums, emails, or written mail, whichever people are comfortable with. Finally, I want to leave Curb's contact information with you all. Uh, we're available to answer your questions, to follow up with information from tonight's proceedings or anything else. We're available in office as well to come by and visit, and we're always happy to listen, hear from our constituents and address their needs. So thank you again for taking the time to be here tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. A. Strab. Our final presentation of the evening will be from Carly Massentene uh with the Kansas Corporation Commission's staff. And Carly, I'm sorry to do this to you, but we, we've run kind of long with these first two presentations. So anything you can do to, to motor through and move us along, we, we want to hear people's comments. So um, we would appreciate uh any, anything you can do to move quickly. So thank you so much.
Thank you, certainly. Um, I, I do believe I have a presentation with our IT staff, and I will get going once that shows up on the screen here. Okay, wonderful. Well, good evening. My name is Carly Massentene, and I am an attorney who works for the Kansas Corporation Commission. I'm here tonight to give a high-level overview of the commission and how it operates, as well as explain how my clients, the staff of the commission, are currently analyzing Evergy Kansas Central's application. Next slide, please. As Evergy highlighted earlier tonight, they are seeking to invest in two combined-cycle gas turbine generation stations, and we'll call those the power plants going forward. Evergy is also seeking to invest in a solar generating facility. In total, these investments would add about one-point-five gigawatts of new power production to Evergy's territories across Kansas and Missouri. Evergy's request in the instant docket is for a predetermination that the plan to build those investments and the estimated costs associated with them are prudent. And this means Evergy is requesting an explicit decision from the commission that if it builds the two power plants and solar generating facility, it will be allowed to recover that investment from its ratepayers. I'd like to emphasize that Evergy is not seeking to recover the entirety of the cost of this investment from Evergy Kansas Central or EKC customers. Evergy plans to devote one-half of each of the power plants to Evergy Kansas Central territory, and the remaining halves will be devoted to and paid for by residents in other Evergy territories. Next slide. So as we go forward tonight, I will first give a very quick overview of the commission and the commission's technical staff. I'll then move into discussing what staff is required to look at by law, as well as other areas staff is focused on in their analysis. And finally, I will touch on Evergy's proposal for cost recovery of the investments in this docket. There's been a little bit of confusion regarding Evergy's recent filings, as there have been a few made within the recent months. And as many of you are aware, Evergy Kansas Central filed a rate case in January of two thousand and twenty-five. That rate case is a separate proceeding from Evergy's request here. One way to think of it is that in the two thousand and twenty-five rate case, Evergy is requesting to recover costs from projects and other services that have already been made and are currently being used. This proceeding is asking for a determination that in the future, Evergy will be able to recover costs associated with these power generation investments. Now, there is also a special mechanism in Kansas law that provides Evergy the ability to recover portions of an investment in power generation outside of a rate case via a line item charge on customer bills. This method is called construction work in progress. I will touch just a bit more on that later to close out the presentation. Next slide, please. The Kansas Corporation Commission is a state agency headed by three commissioners who collectively act as a body in determining matters that come before them. The current commission includes Chair Andrew French, Commissioner Dwight Keen, and Commissioner Annie Keather. The commissioners are appointed by the governor and serve staggered four-year terms. The commission has jurisdiction to oversee a number of industries that operate in Kansas, from electric and natural gas to telecommunications to oil and motor carriers. Next slide, please. Administrative proceedings at the commission look very similar to civil litigation, and hearings held at the commission are similar to a trial, as you may see in district court. The commissioners act as judges. They hear and weigh evidence, witnesses testify before them, and they issue orders that can be appealed to higher courts. The utility or applicant, which here is Evergy, acts as a party to that case. The commission employs a staff of professionals who are available to provide guidance and input on the various technical issues involved in the regulation of the industries that the commission oversees. Staff also acts as a parting, as a party to a proceeding. And while they do serve in an advisory role to the commission, staff develops and defends its own independent position, and they are represented by councils separate from the commission's council in recognition that staff's duty is ultimately owed to the state of Kansas and to the general public. Just like in a court, it's the attorney's job to present their client's case to the commissioners. I represent the KCC's technical staff, and in this proceeding, I will advocate for their expert analysis and opinion of whether Evergy should be pre-approved for cost recovery of these investments. Next slide, please. The commission's staff are dedicated state of Kansas employees that have a tremendous amount of education, professional knowledge, and training in technical fields such as accounting, economics, engineering, and complex financial analysis. During proceedings before the commission, staff attempts to weigh numerous competing interests and develop an independent position that it believes is best for all stakeholders involved, including those of the ratepayers and of the utility. Next slide, please. Commission staff's review of Evergy's proposal in this docket is guided primarily by a law in Kansas titled KSA 661239, which was amended last legislative session to provide a statutory process for utilities to request that the KCC determine whether an investment would be appropriate to be recovered via rates. A cornerstone of staff's analysis here mandated by Kansas law will be for staff to look at whether Evergy's planned investment aligns with its most recently filed preferred plan and resource acquisition strategy. So what is that? Evergy's presenter touched on it earlier. What we're referring to there is the fact that Evergy has to plan for how much electricity is going to be needed by its customer base out into the future to ensure that it consistently has enough power to provide for the need for electricity. Evergy's energy plan is called its Integrated Resource Plan, and it is filed at the KCC on a three-year rolling basis with updates filed each year in between. Staff analyzes Evergy's plan every year in another docket. The most current docket is up there on the screen for those interested. So staff is adequately equipped to conduct the analysis required by KSA 661239. Next slide, please. In addition to ensuring that Evergy's request is aligned with Kansas law, staff is conducting a rigorous analysis of various focus areas. Ultimately, staff will have to determine whether the investments are in line with existing Evergy energy planning processes and whether their cost is reasonable compared to the economic and reliability benefits unlocked by the investment. Next slide. Staff has delved into a thorough analysis of many different focus points, some of which are listed on this screen. But really, this is a small batch of examples of the different areas staff has inquired into and is evaluating to make its determination. And after its investigation is complete, staff will submit written testimony that indicates its position on the application and will actively participate in the proceeding. Again, staff's role is not to help one party over another, but rather is to provide independent assistance to the commissioners in balancing competing interests and evaluating the total impact of the proposal on the public. Next slide. So finally, let's talk about the cost recovery proposed for the investments. As I mentioned earlier, this proceeding is separate from a rate case. Traditionally, a rate case is where a utility would request to recover costs, such as those associated with ongoing construction of investments like power plants. And that has not changed. There has, however, been an addition to a utility's options to recover these types of costs. In July of 2024, the Kansas Legislature authorized public utilities in Kansas, like Evergy, to recover the financing costs associated with ongoing construction in between rate cases. And the theory of why this is good policy is that paying the cost back quicker through the use of a line item charge on customers' bills reduces the overall amount of interest that accrues on the debt borrowed to finance these investments. So the result is that the overall costs paid by ratepayers will be lower than it otherwise would be if Evergy were to have the interest accrue up until the next rate case. Next slide, please. Up on the final slides, we have pertinent information relating to staff's testimony filing as well as further ways in which you can make your opinion heard. I encourage you to please take a photo of these slides. Staff is filing its testimony on March 14. The last several months, staff working on this case have been almost entirely devoting their time. And that's not just eight-to-five time, but I mean nights and weekends devoting their personal time to analyzing every aspect of Evergy's investment plan. And we look forward to filing an extremely substantive and comprehensive analysis of our position on March 14. You can access staff's testimony by going to the commission website. Further instructions, again, are up on the screen. And we encourage the public to read through the filings and keep up with our proceedings in that fashion. Next slide, please. The remaining deadlines in the docket are shown on the screen here. Under the current schedule, the public comment period ends at 5:00 PM on April 7. So if you intend to submit a comment in the docket, you must do so by that date and time. Next slide, please. And we will leave you with information on how to submit a public comment in the docket. Again, please take a photo of this as well. There are several other methods in addition to making a comment here tonight in order to make your opinion heard. You can do so through the KCC's website and accessing the Your Opinion Matters tab. And you can also mail in written comment to the commission's address or by calling into the Office of Public Affairs. And this concludes my presentation tonight. Thank you all for attending this public hearing, and we look forward to receiving your comments.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Massentene. With that, we will now, without any further ado, move to taking oral comments, public comments, from all of you that have gathered here with us this evening. Before we move to that opportunity for oral public comments, I do want to note that the commission will be accepting written comments on its website at kcc.kas.gov. Just as Carly mentioned, you can click on the Your Opinion Matters tab on the homepage, and comments may be submitted by, can also be submitted by mail to the commission's Office of Public Affairs at 1500 Southwest Arrowhead Road, Topeka, Kansas 66604. And as Carly said, we will be accepted until April 7 at 5:00 PM. The comments submitted will be part of the official commission record in this proceeding and will carry the same weight as oral comments that are made tonight. So if you have lengthy comments, it may be best to submit them in writing. Because of the large number of registrants for this hearing and to ensure everyone wishing to speak has an opportunity, I will be limiting each commenter tonight to two minutes of speaking time. For those of you participating on Zoom and wishing to comment, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order you raise your hands. To raise your hand, I believe you just have to use, hit the React button at the very bottom. I think there's a heart, and then you'll have the opportunity to raise your hand. I see some of you have already taken advantage of that. Wonderful. As I mentioned before, to ensure that anyone wishing to make a comment has the opportunity to speak, I want to emphasize that I will be limiting comments to two minutes. You'll notice a timer on the screen to help keep track of time. When that timer reaches zero, there should be an alarm that sounds, and your microphone will then be muted, and we will move on to the next commenter. Two minutes goes faster than you may realize, so please be succinct and ready to speak when you're called upon. When your name is called, you will see an on-screen message to unmute your microphone. Once you unmute, please begin by stating your name and the city and county you reside in. Your comments are recorded and will be part of the official commission record. Please refrain from any inappropriate language or disruptive behavior as that will result in us silencing your microphone. The commission considers this a very valuable opportunity for us to hear directly from Kansans about Evergy's proposal, and we appreciate your cooperation to make sure this goes as smoothly as possible. All right, I was going to tell you to please begin raising your hands, but as I say, folks have already taken that opportunity. I will go ahead and call on you in the order that I saw your hands appear on my screen. So with that, we will go to, I have, let's see, in my list, I have Terri Wilkie first.
Yes, thank you for letting me ask a question, not a comment. I want to know who's going to pay for the methane pipelines to the Viola and New Kirk plants. And I do believe one pipeline was six miles, and then the other was not a specified length, although they, Evergy did say there would be a need for the natural gas to be piped in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkie. So we are hoping to get comments instead of questions tonight, but I will, if the company would like to give a less-than-one-minute response on who will pay for the pipelines, that would be great. And then hopefully, Ms. Wilkie's got your information she can follow up later if she wants more detail.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman French. So the pipeline is intended to be built and by the pipeline companies. The Hutcheson Plan is essentially on top of pipeline infrastructure where it's being built. And we've got approximately 20-mile pipeline to the Viola plant where it is. We will be paying for the pipeline construction over time through the firm-gas-transport contract for the plants. So that'll be part basically of the fuel charge for those plants over time, not directly part of the capital cost of the plants themselves. And that is all I will have for response. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. All right, next on my list for a comment is Cameron Seep. I hope I've got your name right.
Yes, sir. Cameron Seep. My video is not able to turn on, but that's okay. I'm happy to do it this way. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate being able to witness your great presentations very much. I'm the Executive Director of the Labor Management Trust for the Laborers Union. I cover western Missouri and Kansas, and I represent our union contractors who employ thousands of Kansans who are the builders and the skilled labor of our community. I wanted to say that we are in support of these kinds of projects going on in our community because it helps widen the ways that we create power, and it allows us to build and go to the next step. I do want to kind of highlight for everybody that the solar plants that have been, or solar fields that have been built across the country have been built with labor that is not from the area where it's being built. And so I would like to ask the commission to just keep an eye on that. If there's a way to have an ask where a report is generated, where how much of the labor is hired locally. We've talked about economic development. We've talked about the bonus tax credit for the IRA compliance. I'd like to just know that if the IRA compliance is trying to highlight apprenticeship, that it uses apprenticeship in its community, people that live in our community, that we raise each other. And I say that as someone who's been through the apprenticeship, and I'm very thankful for those opportunities.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Seep. And I do want to note at this time, we do only have 11 folks with their hand raised. So go ahead and raise your hand and get in line if you do want to comment. If this is all we're going to have, I will tell you, I'm going to be much more lenient with my two-minute limit. So for those of you that have your hands raised to speak, we will still ask you to be succinct, but I'm not going to cut you off right at two minutes, just so you know. Let's go to our next speaker, and I will ask you to begin with your name and your place of residence when you begin your comment. And our next speaker is Lee Hercock.
Thank you. You pronounced it correctly. I live in Baser, Kansas, in Leavenworth County. And so as a consumer, customer, I have a question and a comment, both on a personal and professional level. Question is, at this time, what are the projected construction costs anticipated to be? And then, following up with that, I work in an industry. I'm a consultant but also known as a contract compliance auditor, and I work with many different silos of industries, but have worked significantly in the electro, I'm sorry, the utility industry. And I am curious whether there is in place or there will be consideration or would like it, I've already posted a comment, for the utilization of an independent organization to do real-time invoice contract compliance and review so that costs are contained and don't have to possibly be something that contributes to higher-than-necessary rates. If there is active monitoring of the contracts, the billings and that type of stuff, then certainly Evergy and their investment costs can be controlled or that can be oversight by the state, by the commission as part of the regulatory process. So that's my question and my comment, and I do have my comment out there posted. So I'm available for further follow-up if somebody elects to.
Mr. Ives or Mr. Humphrey, would you like to briefly address, I know it's not a simple question necessarily, but the current projected investment size for each of the generating facilities?
Yeah, this is Jason. I think the easiest way to talk about it is the rate impacts that Darren had. The contracts themselves and the cost of the plants are confidential for that, but the rate impacts that flow through that Darren touched on earlier are kind of how we've been talking about it publicly in this context. And then for contract and project controls, that's certainly something that we will work hand-in-hand with the commission and its staff as we go through these projects. And utilities are lucky enough to get all of their costs heavily audited. So that's all, Chair French.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, we will turn to Mr. Michael Rumford.
Can you hear me?
We hear you. Yes, go ahead with your name and your place of residence.
Michael Rumford, Wichita, Kansas, Sedgwick County. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. Your attorney, Carly Mastin, then, I was wondering, I don't expect her to get on right now, but did Ever, was Evergy, did they get the Ruffer Law, which gives them the right of first refusal? If that was just there. Okay, the other questions that I had, or statements that I had, I'll get the names right. Mr. Jason Humphrey, I really appreciated that he cleared up one of my concerns, 90% less water is used in these plants. I know Wolfcrick has a complete reservoir at its disposal, but here in south-central Kansas and western part of the state, we've been in a dramatic drought for a very long time now. So any water at all being taken from the Aquifer or the Arkansas River or any tributaries is going to be a very dramatic problem. The other issue that I see with this is the solar arrays that I've seen, that they cover vast amounts of acreage, and that takes it away from either ranchers or farmers. And you have something that a deer jumping through might damage and create more problems. It's just not a real, I wouldn't think, economical way to try to create electricity. Taking away from our ability to grow more food doesn't sound like a good thing to do to me. Although these new CCGT combined-cycle units, that sounds a whole lot better than a nuclear. So that's all I had.
All right. Thank you very much.
Would Darren Ives be the best person to address the Ruffer question rather than Carly?
Well, I think what we'll do on that is I just wanted to remind folks that if you do have questions, if it's a quick question, I'm allowing some leniency. But we do have a great resource with the Kansas Corporation Commission. You can always reach out to our Office of Public Affairs, and we'll give their contact information later. You can also find them on our website. They can connect you with our staff for a lot of these questions, or if necessary, they can connect you with the utility company who can follow up on some of these questions. So hopefully, we can mostly limit it to comments moving forward. With that, though, we will move to our next public comment, Michael Brosh. Go ahead, and we'll ask you to unmute, and then I'll have you introduce yourself and say where you're from and give your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We do hear you loud and clear.
I am Mike Brosh. I live in Leewood, Kansas, and I'm speaking on behalf of AARP. I am pleased to be here again. I had some prior comments in recent Kansas Gas Service and Evergy Rate Case Matters. I would note that AARP has submitted its comments more formally in written form, so I've only summarized those here tonight. I am an AARP volunteer. I retired after dedicating my entire professional career to utility regulation as an expert witness. I was the president of Utilitech, a small consulting firm in the Kansas City area since the mid-1980s. And I have an accounting and finance background and have testified in more than 180 formal proceedings and numerous other investigations and informal regulatory matters, including several proceedings involving Evergy. I have preliminarily reviewed the Evergy predetermination filing, the testimony of Evergy's witnesses, and have identified a few important issues that merit closer scrutiny by staff, Curb, and the commission. These issues are outlined in the filed comments. I'll just highlight them here now. First, I would note that AARP believes the broad intervention by many parties to this docket who are well-positioned to address Evergy's resource planning and the specific capital additions caused Evergy, or excuse me, caused AARP to conclude that it cause Evergy, or excuse me, cause AARP to conclude that it needs to take no position with respect to the reasonableness of the plans, the resource planning or the anticipated costs, trusting that there will be a complete record upon those issues where the commission can base its decision. Instead, AARP is more focused on the company's rate-making proposals. And here we have some specific recommendations described in our filed comments. Most importantly, I would note the proposed Quip Rider and depreciation deferrals represent a poor regulatory policy because they are a single-issue ratemaking. They focus only upon specific increasing costs in isolation for special treatment outside of general rate cases. This is poor regulatory policy because it ignores other favorable changes within the business between rate cases, including growth in customer accounts, sales revenues, continuous recovery of depreciation on existing plant, and any cost savings or productivity gains achieved by Evergy, cost savings from the retirement of existing generation. The, the, the point is, changes occur that are both favorable and unfavorable and piecemeal regulation is poor policy. However, AARP recognizes that last year's utility-friendly Kansas legislation enables the company to impose single-issue surcharges and deferral of costs for recovery upon customers. This legislation bypasses normal regulatory discretion afforded to the commission and the commission appears to be precluded from considering whether Evergy has any genuine financial need for these exceptional ratemaking benefits. Under these circumstances, AARP suggests that the commission recognize how these ratemaking proposals shift the substantial costs and risks of Evergy's new construction from shareholders toward ratepayers. Additionally, Evergy admits that its predetermination ratemaking proposals will improve its cash flow and financial ratios. The substantial shifting of risks and costs and improved cash flow benefits should be translated by the commission into correspondingly reduced levels of authorized return on equity in pending and future Evergy rate cases. The only tangible benefit ratepayers will receive in return for Quip Rider rate surcharges is the avoidance of allowance for funds you're used during construction or AFUDC. Under normal accounting for utility construction activities, investors fund construction costs and carrying charges on Quip are simply added into the balance of overall costs by capitalizing AFUDC. With Evergy customers financing construction costs through the Quip Rider, AFUDC should be fully avoidable.
I'm not going to cut you off, but we've, we've been going on several minutes now. So if you can kind of wrap up succinctly, that would be great.
I'm, I'm near the end. AARP proposes that after construction is completed, Evergy be required to submit evidence of the cumulative amount of charges to the Quip Rider for each project compared to the cumulative amount of AFUDC costs that were avoided because of the Quip Rider. That would allow as a check of reasonableness to confirm that ratepayers received what they paid for. AARP also opposes Evergy's recommendation that the revenue requirement for the new SolarSky resource be levelized over the projected life of the resource. This is unreasonable and would tend to overcharge customers in the early years when production tax credits are available to reduce costs. There's no reason for the commission to rely upon inherently uncertain projections of SolarSky costs over future decades, burdening ratepayers with excessive levelized charges in the early years while leaving the benefits of production tax credits for the primary cash flow benefit of Evergy shareholders. Please consider these comments in planning work on the determination filing and in Evergy's future rate case filings. And I'm available to answer any questions that may arise. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brosh. We will now move to our next commenter, Joe Douglas.
I am Joe Douglas. I am from Lawrence, Kansas. I, I am a customer and I am a grandfather. And as a related issue, I'm a member of the Hearing Loss Association of America. And I, I would like to comment that a good many million people in the United States would be excluded from this, um, this meeting because of a lack of captioning. I think captioning should be a standard on, on any, any thing of this sort. As a grandfather, I'm particularly concerned about the world that my grandchildren are going to inhabit. So I'm taking a broader view of, of this whole process. And it seems like that there are three assumptions of, of all the people who have presented. Number one, that we need to meet whatever demand there is for electricity. Number two, that meeting that need will necessarily require burning fossil fuel and releasing CO2 emissions. And, and there's been no specific comment on environmental effects in regard to climate warming. So I, I, I would say that before we increase production of electricity, I would like to, to feel like there's been a serious attempt at, at minimizing our need for, for electricity through increased energy efficiency in, in all, all those aspects. I, I, I would just say that we can't save the world from climate change and continue increasing CO2 production all at the same time. Thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. All right, we will turn to our next commenter, Marin Dowlin.
Can you hear me?
We do hear you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Marin Dowlin. I'm from Junction City, Kansas and Gary County. I do have a question, but I will try to make it brief. Was any kind of storage, uh, electricity, storage system put into the mix at any time from Evergy? And because of the volatile mix of generators you have, why was it not considered to help your baseload?
Mr. Humphrey, would you like to briefly address the inclusion of storage?
Um, so our integrated resource plan solves for kind of an hourly need for our customers across a 20-year period. And we give that model tools to work with and those tools are different types of power plants like energy storage or like the solar facility before us in the predetermination today. As of today, our plan has not selected energy storage. It's not part of the most cost-effective portfolio. But I would anticipate that does change here in the next few years as the benefit of the time shifting that energy storage gives you becomes more apparent in the Southwest Power Pool. But the, the plan today does not reflect the need for energy storage.
Thank you, Mr. Dow, or yeah, Mr. Dowlin, if you want to continue.
Um, yes, please, in the future, think about making it more of your energy mix. And I'd like to know sometime what your utilization rates are for your solar and your wind, if, if they have to be shut down at a certain times because there's overproduction where that could be used in a storage system.
All right. Thank you very much for that comment. We now turn to our next public commenter, Raishan Sataki. And thanks so much for the help on, on pronouncing the first name.
Sure. Uh, yes, no, no problem. Um, yes, Raishan Sataki, I am in the city of Leavenworth and the county of Leavenworth. Um, and I'm a sister of charity of Leavenworth also. And thank you for this presentation was very clear. And I may not have my, I'm just a ratepayer, but I've also been an executive director. So, uh, the, the first thing is I love the efficiency on the CCGTs. Um, but I, in that strategic plan, I think it was the 2024 IRP. I don't know why it wasn't addressed, you know, in 2027 is 150 megawatts of solar, but then 28 was 300 megawatts, 29 was 150 megawatts and 2030 was 150 megawatts. Those got like skipped over. Um, and I don't know why. I wonder if that could be addressed.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Humphrey, do you want to briefly address why those are not part of this proceeding? I think that was the question.
That is correct.
Yeah. So as we continue to add resources to the generation fleet for Evergy, uh, we will file additional predetermination cases at those times. So the predetermination is resource or investment specific. So today we were just talking about three of those power plants, the solar and the two gas. Uh, but we would intend to have additional cases in the future as we continue to fill needs identified in the integrated resource plan.
Thank you. Yes, my, my comment would be kind of along the lines with Joe who was earlier, just to focus with uh, the, the solar for a climate in, in need. And I don't know if I did the math right. When, when we get everything online in 2030, am I right that it'll end up being a complete rate increase of 9.3%? Because there's 4.3% for each of the CCGTs and 0.7 for the other one, the solar?
Yeah, Darren or Jason, would you like to address that?
Yeah. Can you hear me, Chair?
I do hear you.
That so, um, that's correct. It's a little over 4.3%. Uh, once in, in service for each of the, the gas plants and about a 0.7% for the solar. Um, that, that's an aggregate level, which is, you know, while we talk about it, it takes us you know, five years roughly to get to the point where we construct that and that's in service. So it, it looks like a, a run rate of inflation as you run over that timeframe, but and, and it also doesn't reflect, you know, other changes that will occur between now and 2029 or 2030. I mentioned one in the presentation that we, we expect there to be more electricity sales i- in that timeframe from our existing and new customers that, that will work to bring down that impact overall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ives. With that, we will turn to our next commenter for a public comment, Brian Ferguson.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity. My name's Brian Ferguson. I'm a private ratepayer in Lenexa, Kansas, and I have two questions. Um, and it's regarding the solar plant asset acquisition. And it had, it's with regard to the investment tax credits and the production tax credits. Um, which are at risk and as everybody's probably aware that US House of Representatives is reviewing the IRA and they're expected to rescind the renewable tax credits via Congressional Review Act. So my questions are, number one, how is the utility navigating this administration's disregard or the uncertainty for those credits? And then number two, what impact do the ITCs and PTCs have on the economics of that asset acquisition? Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Ives or Mr. Humphrey, could you address that very briefly?
Yeah, I'll take that one. Um, certainly Evergy continues to watch federal action broadly uh, across this business. Um, but specifically on the, the Inflation Reduction Act, um, we are hopeful and tend to think that the uh, more traditional solar and wind tax credits will survive. Republican administrations have extended them previously. Uh, they're well-supported and, um, are, you know, bringing a lot of benefit uh, to states that, that helped elect the current administration. Um, but we try to remain nimble in our contracting, building off-ramps and benefits of projects along the way. Uh, having more fuel-free resources on the grid that react and perform at our peak hours is a really, really good thing for all uh, of our resource mix. Uh, and so we still believe that this is the right plan. Uh, and we're kind of following the law of the land today, which includes the use of either production or investment tax credits for these projects.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We will now move to our next person with a public comment and that is Angela Shifrocky. I, I probably butchered that last name, but, uh, go ahead and correct me.
Hello?
Hello, we hear, we hear you.
Okay, I'm Angela Shifrock. I live in Prairie Village, Kansas, Johnson County. I am asking you commissioners to please vote no on Evergy's request for a rate increase. In fact, I am asking you to please lower the rate charge because of the last record profit from the 74 million that was granted in 2023. Recently, CEO David Camel reported the biggest driver of increasing shareholder earnings was the 2023 rate hike and also projected higher stock prices of 2025. So when I hear him say that focus is on keeping rates as low as possible and then asking for an astonishing rate hike, his words ring very hollow to my ears. Kansas has abundant renewable resource potential. Renewable energy already accounts for more than 50% of Kansas electricity generation. We are third in the nation. The majority of wind generation is exported to the Southwest Power Pool and subsidizes energy usage in neighboring states. Of note, also when coal was frozen by cold weather, our wind farms supplied the needed electricity. Instead of building two new fracked gas power plants, Evergy should invest in improving the transmission infrastructure, improving batteries, improving the grid, so it continues to operate reliably and safely, especially in times of congestion and emergencies. Why not develop lots of small roof solar sources on existing structures? Just be careful. One last thought. What does a 13 monthly rate increase mean for a man who is paid a salary of $7 million like CEO David Camel? And what does that mean for a retired pensioner or for a single mom with two kids trying to survive in these inflationary times? It's all in your perspective, isn't it? Please vote no. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shifrock. We now move to our next commenter, Jennifer Connolly.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm Jennifer Connolly and I live at 3353 North 159th Street East, Wichita, Kansas. Uh, companies have embraced energy efficiency and renewable energy by onsite solar and wind with storage capacities called parallel generation and third-party power purchase agreements, which is buying power from outside sources with an agreed-upon price. This enables a company to have a price stability and to disconnect from the grid during outages. Google currently has seven gigawatts of energy with energy produced onsite with storage and AI grid optimization. Amazon signed contracts for 20 gigawatts of renewable worldwide, affording them corporate purchase power. Tesla factories incorporate massive solar installations while advanced storage systems stabilize energy supply, ensuring uninterrupted incorporated mass solar insulation. While advanced storage systems stabilize energy supplies, ensuring uninterrupted uninterrupted operations. Walmart surpassed 36% of its energy use uh, with solar panels on the, the rooftops. GM will have 100% renewable nationally uh, this year with onsite generation and storage this year and plans on having and achieving the goal of worldwide by 2035. Nestle has 350 factories worldwide and storage with storage and power purchase agreements. Amazon has 350 wind and solar projects. The list goes on and on as reported by Patent PC. With parallel generation and power purchase agreements, we can make it friendly to do business in Kansas. If the KCC approves these power plants, If the KCC approves these power plants, not only will it cost the rate payer at least of what I've heard from Topeka, when I was listening in Topeka, ten percent and that ten percent on their energy bills. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. And uh, I also heard in Topeka that these power plants will cost around one billion dollars apiece to bill and take five years to come on board. Uh, if a company wants to build out renewable energy projects, it takes somewhere around twelve to eighteen months, depending on the size, and it could take a little bit longer. But as you can see by what you see with the uh, uh, solar project that Evergy is implying that that is the case. We need to stop this monopoly from being the only game in town and attracting new business. Volatility in the grid is happening. And companies want stability and pricing from their electric source. And if you take a uh, I'm sorry, I forgot what I was saying, but basically uh, uh, data center, uh, it'll only employ around thir- thirty to twenty, thirty to fifty people. And maybe a very large data center will provide jobs for two hundred people uh, at the most. So you're talking about putting online for the cost of the rate payer uh, data centers that will generate very little income for our state. We want to attract companies that want to have their own parallel generation. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Connolly. We will now move to our next commenter, Kent Rowe.
Yeah, I just had some questions on the uh, water usage for the combined cycle uh, power plants. I see everywhere in the literature uh, twenty-eight hundred uh, gallons of water per megawatt hour for a combined cycle power plant. Uh, another uh, misconception of uh, uh, large solar projects is agro photovoltaics, which through bifacial solar panels allow grazing, uh, food and plant production, and eco- voltaics, uh, pollinator gardens and so forth. Another misconception is uh, hail damage. Uh, larger, it's solar facilities have what's called a hail stow, where they turn vertical or nearly vertical to avoid the uh, right angle uh, penetration of, of, of hail storms. And I would like to also mention the fragility of natural gas storage caverns under Hutchinson. That has once again uh, shown itself to be uh, quite uh, unreliable uh, with the sinkholes, uh, the leaking uh, of, of these facilities. So uh, that's, those are the questions I had. If anybody wants to answer that, uh, that, fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, not sure if, Mr. Humphrey, was there anything in there that you wanted to respond to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tackle the, the water usage um, first. Um, so the, the number you had was far higher than what we were looking at here. Like I mentioned, ninety percent uh, reduction in water need uh, versus norm is what we're proposing. Uh, we would be somewhere less than a gallon per megawatt hour uh, for us uh, on this plant, very, very water efficient. Um, on the solar projects, hail stow is um, something that we can do uh, when we have good warning on the weather and, and can get the panels moved. Um, and so certainly something we're incorporating into the design as well as agrivoltics for Lawrence Plant, both pollinator-friendly species uh, as well as some active agrivoltics. Um, and working with the Douglas County community on that as we move forward with Kansas Sky. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rowe, for the, the comment and questions, and thank you, Mr. Humphrey, for the additional information. We will now move to our next commenter. I have Zach Pastora next on my list.
Hi, can you hear me, Commissioners?
We hear you, Zach. Good to see you.
Hey, good to see you too. Uh, thank you, appreciate it. I'm Zach Pastora, Evergy customer from Lynwood, Kansas. And tonight I'm speaking as the new Kansas Director for the Sierra Club, Grassroots Environmental Group with nearly five thousand members across Kansas, a majority of whom are Evergy customers. We are concerned for Kansas, the health and management of our ecosystems and natural resources, energy bills and livable future for current and future generations. And our energy choices today and your careful decision-making upon our utility proposals are key elements of uh, a future of Kansas Center Plan. That's why we're here. Together with many Kansans, we oppose Evergy's predetermination application for the two baseload billion-dollar frac gas fossil fuel power plants. While the Sky Energy earns our approval for low-cost, low-pollution, homegrown energy supply with local support, we cannot support this application because these baseload fossil fuel power plants further entrench our dependence upon out-of-state fossil fuel resources that exposes to more risk of rising costs that EIA projects with more than a hundred gas plants coming online in the next decade or, or increased LNG exports. There's also risks associated with price spikes, price gouging, deadly explosions, methane emissions and more. Evergy warned us five years ago that natural gas was and still is more expensive, more volatile to generate electricity with this fuel source. They also told us the merger would give us fifteen years of rate stability, yet we've had two rate requests with average bill uh, rate hikes for twenty percent in the last three years if they had it their way. We know fossil gas fails with our winter storms. We know we continue to pay higher electric bills and energy bills from a year. KU estimates the twenty-one dollar social cost of carbon per megawatt hour for natural gas, and that needs to be included in these KC determinations. We know that these gas uh, development in- includes expansion are a huge climate environmental threat because of methane, which is a more potent greenhouse gas uh, in the near term than carbon. And, and the gas leaks all across the system from extraction to the, to, and the wellhead to the distribution system. You know, it perpetuates extreme water consumption, water contamination and resulting man-made earthquakes through fracking and wastewater injection. The gamble on gas sends us in totally opposite direction of what we need to go for lowering overall greenhouse gas emissions, reducing climate change impacts like extreme weather, ironically of which is the major reason for Evergy's power outages, extreme weather. So we, we need Evergy and all utilities across the world to uh, transition to more resilient a grid, clean energy uh, procurement and energy resources. A, a couple more things, if I may. You know, we've been a part of these uh, energy conversations and public hearings for years now. I never can ever remember any members of the public calling for more fracked gas for, for electric power in Kansas. Instead, thousands of Kansans have called for more low-cost, low-pollution, homegrown energy solutions like wind, solar, distributed energy, energy efficiency, as well as energy storage, green hydrogen, upgrading transmission lines and grid-enhancing technologies. So we need to do more for sustainability, more for Kansas jobs and fulfill our moral obligation to do our part to change course for our future. We have a choice. We can go all in and take this big gamble on billion-dollar gas plants, or we can invest in smarter, lower-cost energy storage, energy conservation, clean energy, homegrown in the state of Kansas with no fuel costs, and do more to help the climate and, and our communities. It dawns on me that eighteen years ago, it was a public servant, a regulator who made a tough decision whether to permit another fossil fuel power plant. It was the courage there to reject that utility proposal and, and do the best for the public benefit in our environment. So please stand up upon your ethics, stand up for Kansans and reject these two baseload power plants and ask Evergy to recontemplate options that are lower cost, more reliable or more sustainable for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pastora. We now turn to our next commenter, Kansas State Representative John Carmichael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, you sound wonderful.
Very good. Well, I, I apologize to everyone. My new state-issued computer uh, came with a camera that doesn't work, and I didn't realize that until this evening. I want everyone to know that my real purpose here today is to listen and to watch. Uh, quite honestly, Zach Pastora said everything I could have said and more. But I want people to understand that while literally as we speak, Evergy is hosting a fine dinner for members of the Kansas Legislature, particularly people on the Energy Utilities and Telecommunications Committee, on which I've served the last twelve years. While Evergy's taking all those folks out to dinner tonight, pardon me, out to dinner tonight, some of us are watching, and that's all I wanted people to know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. We will now turn to our next public commenter, Ruth Rosell.
Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ruth Rosell and I'm Evergy customer in Mission, Kansas. I want to express my support for Evergy's plan to build the new Kansas Sky Solar Project and my opposition to their plans to build the two new fossil gas power plants. Solar and wind energy are the least expensive energy options now, and that was already shown in the, in the presentation. And all efforts should be made and geared toward expanding these clean energy options along with battery storage for any increase in energy needs. Moving into a clean energy future is needed for our health and for our planetary well-being. I strongly oppose the building of any more fossil fuel pl- power plants, including those powered by gas. In addition to the carbon emissions um, from burning gas, methane is released at various points during the fracking and transporting through pipelines. And methane is an even more powerful greenhouse gas that contributes to increasing climate disruptions. At this time in our history, our efforts really must be focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and eliminating the use of fossil fuels so that we have the greatest chance at a stable, for a stable climate future instead of increasingly fierce weather disasters. I encourage you to consider the moral imperative that these decisions be made for the good of future generations as well as for the health and well-being of people now. High-energy users like AI data centers should be accepted into Kansas and provided energy only at the rate at which clean energy can be supplied rather than being a rationale for building new fossil fuel power plants. Furthermore, the proposal that the cost of these two gas power plants of a billion dollars each be passed on to customers will be an economic hardship for many who struggle now to pay their electric bills. I understand that Evergy shareholders get more profit um, when they build expensive power plants, but I encourage you to put the people of Kansas before the profits of wealthy shareholders. As a person of faith, I am concerned that we care well for every person and for the earth itself. And so it's out of these ethical commitments that I encourage you to reject Evergy's proposal that customers pay for these two billion-dollar gas plants and to accept their proposal for the new Kansas Sky Solar Energy Project, giving clear guidance that they should pursue only clean energy development in the future and not fossil fuel gas. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments. We will now move to our next commenter, Scott Jürgen.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so slow.
There we go. We've got you now.
I, I, I apologize. Oh, um. I'm Scott Jürgen. Um, I live in Franklin County, Kansas. And the pace of my speech uh, is um, correlates with the pace of my unmuting. So I apologize. I'm an old guy. I'm a utility investor. I'm in um, part of my stream of income is from utilities. And I like the uh, dividends of utilities. Um, part of the way I do my research is with the US, the EIA, US Energy Information Administration, and I'll also use Statista, a data company. Uh, the EIA had a, has a two thousand twenty-two, March, two thousand twenty-two uh, report called Levelized Costs of New Generation Resources. It's, it's about twenty-four pages. It's an interesting, detailed read. Um, that report shows that the winners in cost efficiency, what I mean by cost efficiency is cost per megawatt generated are renewables, not combustion-fired um, plants. Um, the gas combustion plants uh, they compete, but they are not as efficient as uh, wind turbines or um, solar plants. Um, no, oops, my time is up. So I'm gonna try to
You, you're all right. We'll get, we'll give you some leeway. We've given leeway to several speakers.
As a utilities investor, I think that Evergy building these two coal or um, gas plants, uh, fueled plants disadvantages Evergy over the oh, fifteen to forty-year reach out into the future. And the evidence lies in good data. So I'm not thinking about consumer rates. I'm thinking uh, like a capitalist. And I think, so I hope Mr. Humphreys and Mr. Ives are listening to me. If you just turn a neutral eye to generation capacities and cost efficiencies, I think those um, that renewables win the investors' dollar. I appreciate your, the Commissioners' time tonight and um, sorry I've run over my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that comment. We will now turn to Mr. Jonathan Smith.
Hey, um, thanks for listening to me today. Um, thanks for taking the time to hear my comments. Uh, my name is Jonathan Smith. Um, I am speaking on behalf of the local Kansas nonprofit Loudlight as a community leader regarding environmental sus- sustainability, pardon me. Uh, using your own statistics, you originally said in your presentation that one gas plant would likely cost ratepayers a three-point-four percent bill increase, um, with the other one looking at about a four-point-three percent increase. But in this Zoom, uh, it sounds like they're both gonna end up being about a four-point-three percent rate increase. Uh, and yet when compared with the hundred-and-fifty-nine megawatts of the solar in the Douglas County, the solar project, um, adding only about point-seven percent of a rate increase for ratepayers, uh, it is financially more respectful to the ratepayers to provide them with more clean and renewable energy options. Um, because according to the own, your own statistics, they are less of a price burden on those ratepayers. Um, I'm looking at the cost of a typical combined-cycle gas plant, and it costs between three million and five million per megawatt. Um, that comes to be about two-point-four billion to four billion per plant, at least for about an eight-hundred-megawatt plant. I know that's not the seven-hundred-and-ten that these are promising. Um, looking at the cost per megawatt of solar plants being between nine-hundred-thousand to one-point-three million per megawatt, the cost difference is substantial. For the sake of comparison, an eight-hundred-megawatt solar farm or at least an equivalent amount of megawatts would cost between seven-hundred-and-twenty-million and one-point-oh-four-billion on the high end. The high end being notably substantially less than even half of the low end of these new gas plants. Um, uh, I'm running long on time, so I'm gonna skip a section here. Um.
You're okay. We'll, we'll give you the same leeway we've given everyone else.
All right. Uh, it was noted that one of the benefits of the two combined-cycle gas plants down in Reno and Sumner Counties is that it would spread out the power load further into the southwest Kansas, rather than all of it being up in the northeast. Um, this would allow for shorter transmission distances for those areas. Um, another thing that that ha- area has in abundance is land. Land that would allow for the building and utilization of multiple solar or wind installations, which require a notoriously large amount of land space. Land that would allow for the building and utilization of multiple solar or wind installations, which require a notoriously large amount of land space. Finally, about land use, many citizens, when longing for a solution to climate change, but don't love the physical land footprint of wind and solar, will recommend nuclear, uh, especially as a base load power generator, which is what these gas plants are looking to do. Um, the most recently built twin nuclear reactors in the United States began construction in 2009, hopes of being done in 2016 and 2017. That had a budget of 14 billion. That project just finished in April of last year, 2024, notably not 2016, at a final budget of $35 billion. So that being said, the two reactors that were built will generate 2,200 megawatts um, of efficient, clean nuclear power. Sure. So if we aren't taking climate changes seriously as we need to, that may seem to expensive. And in that case, wind and solar are the only other options right now. Thankfully, they are much, much more affordable than natural gas or coal. And I would like to add, um, go ahead and throw on most of Ruth's comments and Zach Pastora's comments because I, I agree with most of what both of them said. I appreciate them for coming out and thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We now move to our next public commenter, Dawn Hawkins.
Hi, my name is Dawn Hawkins and I'm from Lawrence, Kansas in Douglas County, Kansas. The fact that Evergy is proposing not one, but two new gas plants in Kansas is a clear indication to me that they are not concerned about the health and well being of the citizens of Kansas and are completely out of touch with current and emerging clean energy production and markets. Uh, like the fellow before me just said, it's much cheaper to um, uh, use solar or wind. We know that now. Um, these new plants are predicated on the use of fracked gas. Most people don't know that fracked gas is usually radioactive and the entire production and distribution process creates enormous, enormous amounts of contaminated radioactive water and other radioactive waste. This commission should be very well versed in these facts. If not, I urge you to look into it as, as it is your duty to understand these things in order to protect the people of Kansas. I urge you to read, uh, Justin Noble's recently published book called Petroleum 238, which covers these topics across the country. There's so much produced water from fracking in or, in other words, toxic waste. Um, salt water, it's got arsenic and all kinds of things brought up from the ground. Uh, uh, both injected and naturally occurring, um, radio nuclei from the fracking process that they've run out of room to get rid of it. And this waste is even being brought to Kansas. Why would Kansasans want to prop up this dying industry, pay to do it and risk more toxic and radioactive fracking waste to be produced and brought to Kansas? Any new power generation built in Kansas should be directly benefiting Kansas, Kansans using Kansas generated power, not lining the pockets of the antiquated, unsustainable and dangerously dirty fracking industry. Evergy's investments should be in power storage, solar, wind and grid improvements. I urge the commission to act responsibly and deny this outlandish, expensive and dangerous request by Evergy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We will now turn to our next public comment from Jerry Snyder.
Yeah. Good evening and thanks for this opportunity. I'm Jerry Snyder from Manhattan, Kansas, here in Riley County. Um, just, I, if this has been very good. Um, a lot of people said, um, what, a lot of things that I agree with. I want to say Ruth Roselle, for example, articulated very well. Uh, a lot of what I was going to be talking about, same with Zach Pastora. So I just wanted to be on record, um, saying that, um, maybe be on record saying this is a boondoggle project for the two natural gas plants. Uh, they're not needed and they're not necessary here for Kansas. As many as you've been hearing here, um, it's, it relies on dirty fracking fossil fuel energy. I can't even imagine these plants even lasting beyond a 20 year life cycle alone, you know, uh, we'll have so many other cleaner energy options 20 years from now. So, um, and just the undue burden and costs of building the plants on our taxpayers and rate payers. Um, I just see that, uh, I heard Darren Ives mentioned it's the least cost option. No, there are so many better cost, clean options out there. Uh, wind and solar, I see nothing being proposed for solar in Western Kansas. And, um, I think it was mentioned about the agro voltaics has a great option for Western Kansas where we can have both agriculture and solar farms as well. So these are better, cleaner options for Kansas and I believe they provide better jobs as well for, for the future. So uh, one other final thing with Evergy is, um, their lack of doing any, a very good job with energy efficiency. And I think they need to start there first if they want to, um, proceed, you know, well, reduce our rates. And I just totally disagree with their projections for future increase in energy. I think those is just a pie in the sky of attracting uh, too much energy. I mean, I, I just don't see that energy consumption going up for Kansas. So uh, that's it. Thanks for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. We now move to our next commenter, Ty Gorman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, Ty.
Okay, great. Um, it's not letting me do my video, but that's all right. Um, uh, Ty Gorman, I'm the, um, representative for the National Beyond Coal Campaign here in Kansas. Um, agree completely with many of the comments that have been given tonight. And, um, oh, they just turned it on. Okay. Um, so, uh, wanted to, um, you know, just echo some of the comments about the high cost, high risk. Um, the, the nature of the gas plants being a pushing costs on to residential customers from a, you know, load projections that are pie in the sky, like we said a minute ago. Um, but it's a national trend, um, along with some others to put a lot of pressure on commissioners around the country to manufacture an emergency of data centers, create this uh, requirement that, uh, through, you know, various other organizational bodies to seem like it's, you have to build a bunch of gas right now. And so when people say in 20 years in the future, uh, there'll be a bunch of other clean energy and these assets will be stranded. Um, that maybe doesn't help you as much right now, even though it's true. And even though it will cost customers a lot of money and Evergy's pushing all this risk from the inevitable price hikes and jet and, and, uh, price turmoil of gas being exported and, um, and gas being really risky and in the production and pipeline during winter storms. Uh, so I want to spend my last minutes talking about how there are other options right now um, that Evergy is not exploring and that I hope the commission can put pressure on them to explore before looking at Peker gas plants, because there should not be base load gas plants. Base load is a thing of the past. Uh, it's a, it's an inefficient way of electric grid. So I'll just quickly say grid enhancing technologies um, that Evergy has not yet explored can provide so much value for so little cost and uh, reduce the size necessary and the type of plants necessary on the generation side. Energy efficiency needs to be scaled up. Demand response and aggregated demand response is something that commission can ask Evergy to bring a better plan for and scale up to a level that it's a new way of, uh, controlling load and controlling load, including the data center load that they're projecting is, is an incredible amount of gigawatts that should be uh, not accepted by the commission as inevitable. And, uh, and finally, clean repowering, more storage and solar onsite on Evergy interconnection points that can be done quickly. So thank you very much, uh, for the time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Now we will turn to Michael Miller. Well, Mr. Miller, are you seeing a button that allows you to unmute?
Is that it?
Uh, we've got you now.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, Mike Miller, I'm from Roland Park, Kansas. I wanted to address the issue of, uh, Evergy's commitment to solar power. And to begin, I signed up for their pilot project here in Kansas, it's about a 35 megawatt plant up near their Hawthorne plant. And even, I'm, even though I'm paying 40% more per kilowatt hour, uh, it took them several years to get this small plant, uh, up and, and going. So I'm questioning their commitment. I also wanted to know about, in their, their original energy plan here that I've got in front of me for 2021, they were planning on an additional 700 megawatts worth of solar power production capacity by that. Has that been kept? And let me finish on this. And what about the KCI project with, with, you know, mega pilot, mega project of up to 1,000 megawatts?
Yeah, Mr. Humphrey or Mr. Ives, do you want to comment on the, the status of any of those, uh, other solar projects that are out there in your, in your plan or that are, have been discussed publicly?
Yeah. So the, um, we actually had a predetermination for some of that other solar in front of the KCC previously. Uh, unfortunately, the projects were not commercially viable and we had to pull that predetermination, uh, at the time. Um, so, you know, that's one of the reasons, the uncertainty in the, uh, environment to build new projects is one of the reasons we do annual updates to the integrated resource plan. Uh, and so the 2024 update is the most recent we have, uh, and that kind of shows our forward plan. Uh, the KCI project of which Evergy was part of a consortium, uh, that won, um, the RFP that the city of Kansas City um, has moved forward with. Uh, we did have a vote in front of the city council of Kansas City in January of this year that they kind of reaffirmed and re-supported the pre-development uh, agreement for that project. And so that's about all I can say, but still, uh, trying to get some solar built at KCI.
But how many megawatts is in the early phase of that? And when will, how big will the project be at, when it's finished? And how long will that take?
Uh, th- those details aren't public and still working, uh, through the process with the city of Kansas City.
Okay. I saw you came on camera. Did you have something to add there?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, we also have a couple of, uh, current solar projects, uh, seeking approval on the Missouri side of our territory as well. Um, I know we're not talking about that here specifically today, but, uh, uh, it is more solar that Evergy is looking to invest in.
Just took the words out of my mouth there.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Miller, uh, did you have any further comment?
I'm fine. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your, your comment and questions. Um, with that, I do not see any more hands, but I'm gonna just pause for one second to see if anyone uh, wants to take this opportunity to make a final public comment. All right. If we do not have anyone else, uh, wanting to make a comment, I do want to remind you all that the public comment, uh, session or the public comment period is still open until 5:00 PM on April 7th. Uh, Michelle or Jaden, if you can put up our slide that gives the information on how to make those public comments, as we mentioned before, uh, we have a form that you can do it on through our website. Uh, you can also call our public affairs office, uh, or you can, uh, send them through the mail. So there are several different ways you can submit a written comment, uh, that will receive the same weight that the oral comments did this evening. With that, I'll also remind you that the evidentiary hearing on this matter is scheduled to begin in Topeka, uh, in the commission's first floor hearing room on April 21st of this year at 9:00 AM. And the commission has to issue a decision by July 7th of this year. With that, we will conclude the public hearing. Thank you for joining us and we are now adjourned.